I invite you to join with me in the invocation. Our heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer asking for guidance as your servants. You have entrusted us as stewards of this community. Please guide our hearts in each decision we make. We give to you our city, our employees, and ourselves. May we always be mindful of their service and trust in you. Let us remember the lives lost in 9/11 and their families. Please be with the children suffering from cancer and heal their bodies and minds. In all that we do together, may we look to you first for inspiration and strength. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Now, we'll mention, since this is Pediatric Cancer Month, the city has a program where you can decorate fire hydrants in honor of pediatric cancer or in honor of someone. So if anyone interested in doing that, I would encourage you to come forward and do Number three, approval of minutes. I think we have a couple of corrections on that. First, we'll take them one at a time. August 2 regular meeting. Think you have some adjustments on that, Ms. Hall?
No, I do not on that one.
Okay. Anyone else have any adjustments on that one? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Who's approved?
Just for the second.
Motion to approve August 2 regular meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. The August 2 close meeting, is that when you have a correction on, Ms. Hall?
No, it's not.
Okay. Anyone have any corrections on that one?
Over.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. The August 12 special meeting.
Correction, that's the correction. The very last paragraph, there was the motion to adjourn until Thursday, September 7, and it should have been Tuesday, September 7, at 6:30 in Council's check.
Ms. Stone, was there another one on this one?
Not that I'm aware of.
And a motion by Councilmember Hall with a correction.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And the last one is August 12, 2021, closed session.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge. Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we have a series of public hearings. The first public hearing is for ordinance 2135 to consider abandonment of the former Leonard Avenue right-of-way. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, this is a public hearing, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Church councilmembers. Tell your name and address, please.
Jody Cook. I own the properties at 123 and 125 Leonard Avenue here in the city of Almaral. Currently would like to get the right-of-way there, the old Leonard Avenue, switched over to a utility easement for my properties in front. I've also spoke with Will Isk with South Central about the property adjoining, and also with Dewey Trice's nephew Vince, who is looking after his properties from Maryland. He came down, I spoke with him last week about acquiring the small section there in front of, in front of my properties that are joining with the new Leonard Avenue from the right-of-way. So I'd like to see if I could get this out of the right-of-way status into a utility easement.
Council have questions? Anyone else care to speak for or against?
Mid-public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. In order to pass ordinance 2135.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number five is to consider a 48-lot major subdivision for Park West, which is off of Poplin Grove Church Road. This is Phase 2. Staff, would you come up and introduce?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. This is the Park West Phase 2 subdivision, which is over off of Park West Drive, Poplin's Grove Church Road. We have here before you the subdivision application and appropriate fee filled out. This subdivision is proposed by LTC Development LLC. This is the signed statement of proposed land use. LTC Development LLC plans to develop a single-family subdivision in the city of Almaral, previously approved as Park West subdivision Phase 2. The tract to be developed is approximately 18 acres, currently zoned R10, and will create 48 new residential lots. Development will be served by gravity sewer that connects to existing gravity sewer on Park West Drive. All lots will be served by city water, sewer, and electricity. Open space will be provided in accordance with the city of Almaral's zoning ordinance. This is just the preliminary review for the Phase 2 of Park West subdivision. As you can see on this, they have completed and/or submitted all the necessary items for this subdivision. Just going to go down into the review here as an introduction. Phase 2 of the Park West subdivision was a development preliminary that was approved in 2003. Our subdivision ordinance outlines that a preliminary plat is valid as approved by city council for two years. After two years with no recorded final plat, the preliminary plat must be resubmitted to the planning board and city council for approval. The developer brings to us a plat that closely emulates the originally approved subdivision with minor changes to meet current fire code and subdivision ordinance requirements. Access. Being a continuation of an approved development, the accesses are proposed as a primary entrance off of Poplin's Grove Church Road through Park West Drive, and a secondary emergency vehicle access is proposed through the rear of the platted cul-de-sac and onto Stanley Community College property. Staff comments include planning the emergency vehicle access as a future 60-foot-wide right-of-way so that it could eventually have the potential to continue as a city street, which is accurately shown as such. For clarification, it is not currently being planned as a city street, but it has that ability in the future as a 60-foot-wide right-of-way. Open space. As a traditional subdivision, only 5% of the gross land area is required to be open space. The developer proposes 0.92 acres of open space, which is adequate in size. Since the planning board meeting, the developer has revised the plat to show open space within the internal boundary of the development being proposed. Originally, it was shown at the front entrance of the existing subdivision. Traffic analysis. A traffic impact analysis is not currently required as it is under the city's threshold for daily trips. Should the development expand in the future, a traffic impact analysis may be required at that time. Utilities and topography. The developer proposes to extend city water, sewer, and electric service to serve the proposed site. Road design. The developer has shown on the plat that all roads to be constructed are 26-foot wide from back of curb to back of curb with a 5-foot-wide sidewalk on one side of the new street and stub accesses to adjacent properties. The right-of-ways are all planned for the 60-foot-wide minimum width. Sidewalks. Sidewalks are shown as 5 foot in width on one side of the road and on stubbed accesses. Setbacks. Typical setbacks in R10 single-family residential are 30 from the front, 10 foot from the sides, 30 foot in the rear, and 20 foot on the side that abuts the street. These are, these are shown accurately on the plat. Lot sizes in R10 for traditional subdivisions are 10,000 square feet for single-family residential. The plat accurately reflects this requirement. As a general comment, at the planning board meeting, staff recommended the developer submit a fully updated preliminary plat instead of the edited copy from the 2003 subdivision. This way, all improvements can be updated with accurate survey data. The open space area can be amended, and all stub connections and accesses can be accurately reflected. The developer has provided all of these items to staff that comply with planning boards and staff's recommendation for approval. I'm going to zoom out on this a little bit so everyone can see the plan. Does council have any questions from staff?
If I remember in the notes, you said that they were coordinating with the other possible subdivision we're going to be talking about later tonight to have a connection to City Lake Drive.
That is correct. So those stub accesses that you see going to the north on here, those are subject to change to meet up with future connections for any future development that would occur on the site to the north. So those aren't completely set in stone. They are, they do have some wiggle room to move left and right to meet up with future development.
Question. What is the threshold to require traffic impact analysis?
The, the city has criteria, the main set of criteria is 500 daily trips that are being triggered by the development and/or, you know, conditional use or rezoning. Since the zoning is staying the same and with 48 proposed lots here, you basically times that by the IT threshold of 9.43, and then it gives you your daily trips. At 48 lots, it doesn't exceed that, that threshold, nor does it exceed DOT's 2,000 daily trip threshold.
Is the second access through Stanley Community College property required?
So as far as, from a zoning ordinance standpoint, since this is obviously over 15 lots, we do require two accesses. We're pretty much banking on future development to the north to get full and complete access to City Lake Drive. However, with the configuration of this plat, one of the best ways to get access right now for emergency vehicles to meet fire code was to get an all-weather access road that goes through the Community College property. It is my understanding that the developer has, has gone about that deal with the Community College.
Okay, would we make a, what kind of requirements would we put on access to that? Is it going to be gravel all the way? I mean, on Stanley Community College's property, they could put a gate up if they wanted to, which would limit access.
Right.
So what kind of restrictions would we have?
So we would have, well, of course, the, the streets interior of the development do have to be 26-foot wide paved curb and gutter. The fire apparatus access road, all the fire code says it has to be an all-weather surface capable of supporting 75,000 pounds. Now, if, if in the future that the Community College decided to put up a fence and were to restrict access, that would be something that likely the, the city fire marshal would want to, want to rectify themselves.
Follow-up to that, okay? Talking about the traffic study, and then this empty, possibly emptying out to or onto Stanley Community College's current drive. Help me at the Community College where this would enter. I can't tell from that. I can't picture where it would be on that. Can you tell me, you have a better, can you describe to me where that is? Because then I have a follow-up.
Sure. And perhaps Mr. Whitley might have a, have a better idea of where exactly that's going. But if you go up College Drive, there is a parking lot to the right, and that's basically where it's going out of through that parking lot, to my understanding.
So if we're, and I'm, you know, that's, it is, yeah, the college is over, yeah, to the left, the college is over to the left. It just looks like to me that the same thing, I mean, you're adding five, you might would be adding a possibility of that many more trips, okay, onto the college property. And College Drive, is that a state maintained road?
Yes.
It is a state?
I know that it's not a city maintained.
It's a state maintained road all the way through the parking lot?
All the way up, all the way to the back where the water tower is.
Okay, so the parking lot, though.
Parking lot is, is college.
And what I just heard is that it appears, unless I heard something wrong, that the entrance to this might be in that top parking lot.
Mr. Whitley, come up, please.
I have always been of the opinion, and we'll go, and we'll vote toward, it's got to happen too, at least, I mean, from the very beginning.
I'm Dylan Blaylock. I'm with Chambers Engineering. We're working on behalf of LTC Development, Mr. Terry Whitley, on this. And actually, the connection to Stanley Community College, if indeed that is made, will be just before you get to that parking lot. It'll be a perpendicular intersection with the main drive. That's, that's how we've got that coming down, right down the property line, and that will tie into the main Stanley Community College drive before the parking lot.
So just as a, so as a point of clarification, does it entrance there, Terry? Or, or I don't care where the police department's little trailer is up there, is it?
The best reference I've got, if you were coming up College Drive, it just meets right, right in kind of where that curve is, just a little bit of a curve. That could change some, though. This is, there's some state funding that's been applied for, and this will be a lot up to the college. All we're doing is making, making another means of egress for them. They, that's the reason the state funding was applied for, because they only have one way in, one way out of college.
And the college has been trying for years to get that second way out.
So we're making it available if, if, if the state funding comes, it could be a lot different road. And that would be up to you guys to decide if you're going to make it a city street all the way out. But right now, if we, if we end up having to do it just to give us egress, it would be the minimum of a 22-foot-wide gravel road that handles, you know, that's engineered and all that would handle the fire trucks. And that's, and it could be, you know, it would be a private road. It wouldn't be a public road. It'd be for safety on them.
Has caught, follow-up?
Yes.
To Community College, any communication with them?
Oh, yeah.
So you're indicating that the money, is that something that's in one of the, one of the houses right now for the Community College for their?
That's what they're working on, yeah. So we've got egress now with an adjacent subdivision that maybe will go in, should go in.
Just north, north of it?
Yeah. If it doesn't go that way, then we'll have to build that road to, to better. Right now, all that the fire department requires for us to do would be to make it a second egress for college. And that's, that's who we're trying to please. We're doing everything just like it was approved 10 years ago, except we're, we're having to meet the new fire code guidelines and, so it'll be good for the college to have, have that way out.
Further questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone else care to speak for or against? I'm going to hand motion close to public hearing.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Close the public hearing. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Before moving on?
Yes, ma'am.
If the public hearing is closed, just have a question, another clarification. Phase 2 of this was started in '03, is that right?
Yes, ma'am. We, we have a, a plan that was submitted to the planning office back in 2003. That was approved at the time.
Got you. So this is 18 years later?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
In order to pass MJSR 2105, if council so desires. Motion approved. Motion by Councilmember Whitley. Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Me.
Motion carries. Moving on to number six is another public hearing. Ordinance 2136 to consider annexation of 54.14 acres off of Morgan Road. Staff, would you introduce again, please?
Sure. So on the 29th of July, the developer, BHR Land Holdings LLC, submitted to us a petition to annex in 54.14 acres, which is more or less a continuation of the Morgan Hills subdivision over off of Morgan Road, which was originally approved back in, of July of 2020, that whole development with the annexation, zoning, and subdivision. So now they are coming back with 54.14 more acres to add on to that annexation area. We have the full petition that is signed and sealed, and that is the rough area of what is proposed to be annexed into the city limits. Without getting too far ahead, they do propose to zone it into R10 inside the city limits and propose it as a cluster subdivision.
All right, we're handling this one at a time. The first one is a public hearing to consider annexation. This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against the annexation, please come forward.
Aye. Good evening, city council. My name is Kim Faulkner. I'm at 555 Marlbrook Drive. That is in the Windsor Hills development, next door to this cluster subdivision. We, meaning me and my husband, are opposed to annexation because that will lead to more zoning for this cluster subdivision, and we're opposed to all this building, mainly because it, it's trying to take in our neighborhood by opening the end of Marlbrook Drive, which was a stub out. So I'll be back when, when we get to seven and eight.
Sure.
But we're opposed to annexation.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak for or against the annexation? In order to close the public hearing, some of, motion by Councilmember Townsend. Second by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. In order to pass ordinance 2136, if council so desires.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Whitley to pass ordinance 2136.
And this is only the annexation?
Only the annexation. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving to number seven is ordinance 2137 to consider a map amendment, pro zoning amendment, 2110, to initially zone 54.14 acre property off of Morgan Ridge. Staff, would you introduce?
Yes, sir. So this is a zoning map amendment request upon annexation for a property located off of Morgan Road, tax record 6462, from county R20 to city R10, general residential district. The location is south of Morgan Road, half a mile west of intersection of Morgan Road and Highway 52. The parcel size, which is totally approximately 132 acres, but as of right now, we are considering 54.14 acres, which is the area that was, the ordinance was just passed in, which is requested for annexation and initial zoning. The applicant is Carolina Development Services LLC. The existing district is county R20, and the proposed district is city R10. The applicant has made a statement for the proposed request. They said that this area is primed for development due to the availability of water and sewer in proximity to Highway 2427. Several single-family neighborhoods are adjoining and in proximity. Therefore, the same zoning designation is being requested during annexation. Open space is provided for the enjoyment of the citizens to use for recreational purposes. The current use of the property is vacant. The proposed use is single-family dwellings as a cluster subdivision permitted per Chapter 92.094b2. The adjacent zoning to the north is R10, to the south is county R20 and RA, to the east is R10 and RA, to the west is R10 and HID, which is the wastewater treatment plant. The 2028 land use plan, the currently adopted land use plan classifies this property as a county primary growth area with surrounding properties inside city limits. Although future land use map designated area west of this parcel as industrial and conservation, the city wastewater treatment plant, the primary areas surrounding this property is classified as general residential. General residential is defined as areas are located within the city, corporate limits, and public utilities are provided. Areas classified as general residential typically consist of lots ranging from one-quarter to one-half acre in size and have an established network of roads that are well-connected but often lack sidewalks. The general residential classification also features areas of low-density development with roads that are not well-connected and frequently terminate in cul-de-sacs. Compact residential neighborhoods that set aside significant natural vistas, parkland, landscape features, and other rural heritage features for permanent conservation are encouraged. Development considerations include environmental impacts, urban sprawl, road connectivity, impact on adjoining neighborhoods, protection of natural features and vistas, and the availability of adequate infrastructure. This property is not located in any regulated floodplain or watershed. This is the future land use map, and where you see this gold star here is where the zoning district is being proposed. All public hearing notice requirements have been met for the August 5 planning board meeting and the September 7 city council meeting. City council set a public hearing date for annexation at its August 2 meeting for the public hearing to be held tonight. This project is for Phase 2 of Morgan Ridge subdivision, Morgan Hills subdivision, excuse me. Phase 1 annexation initial zoning to R10 have been approved by council as ZMA 20-04. This overall property is 132 acres, of which 54.14 are petition for annexation, initial zoning, and subdivision approval. A cluster subdivision preliminary plat and application has been submitted for planning board review, recommendation, and city council review and approval as MJSR 21-04. This is the setback table of setbacks inside the R10 district. Given the proposed use, the parcel's classification under the future land use plan and its proximity to existing R10 zone parcels, the staff finds mayor's proposed rezoning to be consistent with the city's future land use plan. Planning and zoning board held a public hearing at its August 5 meeting and unanimously recommended city council approve ZMA 21-10 upon annexation with the future land use map amendment statement. The future land use map amendment statement reads, "The Almaral City Council finds the action initially zone a 54.14 portion of tax record 6462 as defined in the attached annexation boundary survey prepared by Dent H. Turner from county R20 to city R10, general residential district to be inconsistent with the adopted 2028 land use plan. However, rezoning the property will achieve the public interest and shall be deemed reasonable. The aforementioned map amendment shall amend the city's land use plan." And then we just have the zoning application here. Public notices. Certificate of Service for public notices. Postage on site. And this is the boundary for the proposed zoning district. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Questions, council?
Yes, please. Clarification, you corrected yourself during the, during your verbal comments. In the packet that was given to us, it is called Morgan Hills.
Yes, ma'am.
And in something within here, it's still referencing Morgan Ridge.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure that I know it's the same piece, but just to make sure everything is legal and any legal descriptions that are going on. Just want to make sure all that is covered.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, that was my error.
No, but, but no, in the writing of it, it showed Morgan Ridge.
Right.
Okay? And then here we see Morgan Hills. So which is it?
It is Morgan Hills.
It is Morgan Hills.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Further questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Kim Faulkner again, same address as previously stated. We are opposed to the zoning for this 54-acre property. This, this is going to be such a mess. You're talking about putting all these houses in and having one exit onto Morgan Road and one exit onto Marlbrook. This is a lot of houses, y'all. Our neighborhood is not set up like that. I mean, these houses are 10 foot apart, their property line. That, that's not a lot of space. Our neighborhood is going to be drawn into this, and for an example, my neighbor's house, which is the very last house on the end, there'll be six houses backed up to her one piece of property. That's a lot of houses compared to what we've got in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is an older, established neighborhood, and this cluster subdivision is just going to be overwhelming, and it will change the scope of our neighborhood. So we are opposed to this, this zoning.
Thank you. Questions, council? Anyone else care to s- Anyone else care to speak for or against?
Good evening. I am for because it continues the existing subdivision. Phase 1, that's already been approved.
Your name and address, please.
Tanya Jones. I'm speaking on behalf of the developer. Thank you.
Counsel, have any questions? Comments?
Uh, yes. Come back up.
Yes, ma'am.
So the map that's in front of us right now, the first phase, can you tell me or tell us where that first phase is on this map?
The one that was already approved?
Yeah, that we did a year ago.
So it's this area, if you follow my cursor up here, it goes down here, all the way over here, cuts up here, and then follows the right-of-way line.
So now show me where 138 is, or 52 South is.
52 South is going to be running right about here.
And then 138?
138 should be right, kind of cuts down in this area here.
And the reason I ask, and I probably am asking questions that somebody else might want to know, maybe not, but I do. I know that the issue the first time around was that, again, two entrances and two exits.
Right.
On this one, the proposal right now, and I don't want to get ahead of myself. I may be ahead of myself. I may be on the next one. Am I on seven or am I on eight?
I think if you're talking about entrances, that's going to be the next one.
I do have all the accesses laid out in the subdivision public hearing, which is next.
It is the next one.
Yep. I've got far more detail on the actual design and elements.
Very good, very good. Then I will hold that, I will hold it to number eight. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Further questions? Comments? Last call. Anyone else who cares to speak for or against? I'll entertain motion close to public hearing.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. It'd be in order to consider ordinance 2137, counsel.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes to approve ordinance 2137.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Number eight is another public hearing. This is to consider...
Could we clarify that that's also the ordinance approving the zoning method in this statement?
Put up the consistency and the inconsistency statement.
Sure.
Yes, Hughes. Look at those statements.
And then there's a little bit on the next page of that future.
So I need to read the consistency statement, correct?
Just as a refresher, staff and the planning board unanimously recommended the future land use map amendment statement, but you're welcome to adopt.
Do you want me to read the...
Please read it, yes, please.
The consistency statement.
No, the future land use map amendment statement, if that's what your motion is.
Yes, sir. The Almaral City Council finds the action initially zone at plus or minus 54.14 portion of tax record 6462 as defined in the attached annexation boundary survey prepared by Dent H. Turner from County R20, the City R10, General Residential District to be inconsistent with the adopted 2028 land use plan. However, rezoning the property will achieve the public interest and shall be deemed reasonable. The aforementioned map amendment shall amend the city's land use plan.
That was a motion by Councilmember Hughes and a second by Councilmember Townsend. If you're in all in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Moving to number eight is to consider 168 lot major subdivision, MJSR 2104, on 54.14 acre property off of Morgan Road. Staff, would you introduce?
Yes, sir. All right, so before you is the subdivision application for MJSR 21-04, which is Phase 2 of the Morgan Hills subdivision. The current property owner is BHR Land Holdings LLC, and the applicant's name is Carolina Development Services LLC. This is the signed statement of proposed land use. Carolina Development Services plans to develop a multi-phase, single-family cluster subdivision to be voluntarily annexed into the city of Almaral. The tract to be annexed is 48.21 acres to be zoned R10 cluster, creating 168 lots. Development will be served by gravity sewer that connects to Morgan Road. No new connections to Morgan Road, US Highway 52, or Marlbrook Drive will be provided. All lots will be served by city water, sewer, and electricity. Open space will be provided in accordance with the city of Almaral zoning ordinance. To quickly clarify on the 48.21 acre statement, there had to be more area annexed into the subdivision area to accommodate more open space, which is required by subdivision ordinance. So when this land use statement was submitted and the annexation petition boundary survey was submitted was two different times. One was earlier, one was later. Just wanted to clarify that. For the preliminary staff review, I'm going to go ahead and just scroll down to the subdivision plat so everyone can see what's going on, and then I will read through the preliminary review statements. All right. So all items that are required for a subdivision review have been submitted by the developer. To clarify a couple of things, the erosion and sedimentation control plan is typically submitted during the civil set, which comes after subdivision approval, and the developer is already making plans to do that. For an introduction, Morgan Hills South Phase 2 is a continuation of the approved development that occurred in July of 2020. This new submittal is proposed to add an additional 168 building lots to the already-approved 255 lots that are currently under development. The applicant wishes to voluntarily annex an additional 54.14 acres into the city of Almaral city limits, into the R10 zoning district to accommodate the proposed development. This proposal is submitted as a cluster development, which allows the developer to reduce lot sizes and setbacks by up to 50% of the required minimum size and dimension in the R10 district. The applicant proposes sidewalks on both sides of the road, 18.47 acres of passive and active-use open space, and a curb-and-gutter street system. Access. Being a continuation of an approved development, the accesses are proposed as a primary entrance off of Morgan Road and a secondary access off of Marlbrook Drive. There are two ancillary stubout connections for future development to the south. By those, I mean this one here by the collective open space and this one here for future development. Open space. In cluster developments, the minimum amount of open space required is 5% of the gross land area to be developed. However, when the developer reduces the lot size, the reduction in each lot must be conveyed into additional open space. Based on the number of lots and the proposed amount of reduction in each lot, 16.19 acres of open space would have to be dedicated. The developer is currently proposing 18.47 acres of open space. 8.04 acres is currently shown to be in a single tract, and 10.43 acres is shown in and around the proposed ponds on site. In cluster developments, half of the required open space must be provided with a higher-intensity amenity that residents can use. Some examples would be a dog park, playground, ballfield, or community pool. The developer has proposed a community dog park and active walking trail to meet this requirement. That would be in this large green area here. Traffic analysis. Carolina Development Services LLC, the developer contracted with Ramey Kemp and Associates to conduct a comprehensive traffic analysis for the entire development with a proposal of up to 595 single-family home sites with an expected build-out by 2023. This is the same traffic analysis that was submitted for the previous Phase 1 and will continue to be submitted for up to 595 units on this contiguous site. The study intersections consisted of 2427 and Cobal Avenue, 2427 and Aquadale Road, Morgan Road and Cobal Avenue, Morgan Road and Aquadale Road, Aquadale Road and Marlbrook Drive, Morgan Road and Access A. Left turn lanes and right turn lanes are currently being constructed at the Morgan Road Access A in accordance with the previously-approved development. Prior to the 256 lot being constructed, the city and NCDOT will expect the following improvements: Extension of the northbound left turn lane at Cobal Avenue and 2427 to provide 150 feet of vehicle storage; installation of a four-section signal head for the northbound Cobal Avenue left turn lane at 2427; and install wireless communications equipment to tie the 2427 and Cobal Avenue signal into the Almaral signal system. To clarify, that is prior to the 256 lot being constructed. That is when they actually start building homes as opposed to start creating lots. They have yet to build any home on site. They have submitted a final plat for my review for the approved Phase 1, but we currently do not have any homes on site yet. Utilities and topography. The developer proposes to extend city water, sewer, and electric service to serve the proposed site. Gravity sewer will be implemented to channel all flow into the plant headworks on Morgan Road. The Windsor Hills lift station will be left as existing to remain until the onset of future development. Road design. The developer has shown on the plat that all roads to be constructed are 26 foot wide from back of curb to back of curb with a five-foot wide sidewalk on each side. The right-of-ways are all planned for the 60-foot wide minimum width. Setbacks. Typical setbacks in R10 single-family residential are 30 feet from the front, 10 feet on the sides, 30 feet in the rear, and 20 feet on the side that abuts a street. In a residential cluster subdivision, setbacks are allowed to be reduced by up to 50%, regardless of the proposed lot size. The applicant has accurately represented this on the plat by noting a minimum setback criteria of 15 in the front, five feet on the sides, 10 feet on the side with the street, and 15 in the rear. Lot sizes. In cluster developments, lot sizes are determined by the developer. However, the lot size cannot be reduced by more than 50% of the minimum in the respective district. In the R10 district, lot sizes are permitted to be as low as 5,000 square feet and cannot be less than that. The revised preliminary plat reflects that all lots are meeting the minimum lot size requirements. Cluster lot count max. In cluster developments, the maximum lot count is determined by subtracting 20% from the gross land area to be developed to account for streets and open space, and then dividing by the minimum lot size in the respective district. Given that, the maximum lot count is 168 lots, which is appropriately noted on the plat. As a general comment, the planning board heard this case on August 5th, 2021, and made a recommendation to City Council to approve Phase 2 of the Morgan Hills subdivision. Staff's recommendation falls in line with the planning board's recommendation with the caveat that further detail should be shown on the amenities provided in the eight acres of higher-intensity open space per the cluster subdivision ordinance. That is all I have. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Counsel, questions?
I've got one.
Yes, ma'am. How many square miles is Morgan Road? I'm not 100% sure. Are you asking how long Morgan Road is?
Any time meant for it would be anywhere.
Well, I know that Morgan Road is a 60-foot wide right-of-way, it's state-maintained, and I would approximate that perhaps maybe half a mile in length.
It runs from the DOT on Cobal down past the old Morris packing plant out to Highway 138. Excuse me, 52.
Like that?
It's about a half, maybe a little over a mile.
So when is it ever going to stop requesting a house? So going, they've been doing it since I've been on the ground.
I'm not exactly sure how to answer that. I do know that there is some more area along Morgan Road that could potentially be developed. A lot of the other sites on Morgan Road are pretty steep and have some natural drainage areas in them and a little bit of floodplain, so it might be more difficult to develop on those. But as of right now, I'm unsure of what the developer's plans are for any future development or even further out towards 52.
I think when you start going west on Morgan Road, there's property there that is not part of this, is owned by another individual. And then you have the packing plant, then you have the DOT. So once you go across that bridge and you're heading back east toward 52, you just have to drive down there to see where that little dirt road goes back up in there. And then that's where the property that's here, that's being discussed tonight. But west of that, I don't think you'll ever see much development occurring. Just because, one, the topography of the land, and we know the DOT's not going to produce anything.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Just one more question, and you did indicate that there's no additional in and out other than what has already been, has been approved on Phase 1.
That's correct. Just for clarification, we have this Access A on Morgan Road, which was already approved in the Phase 1, and then this access onto Marlbrook Drive, which was also approved in the Phase 1. Now, this access on the Marlbrook Drive that was initially put in to meet fire code apparatus access for two primary entrances and also to meet subdivision ordinance. The only other potential accesses that we would have for the future, if things were to ever build out, would be these two stubouts right here that would lead down into this property if it were to ever develop. And then, of course, this access here that would basically line straight up to Henning if this property up here were to ever build out as well.
And that was the big discussion at a prior public hearing, was that piece of, that access to 52 onto Henning?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that when the DOT got involved?
I don't believe so. I think DOT, if I remember correctly, got involved on Morgan Road. They never got involved on the 52.
And that was something we weren't... I don't think that was...
You aren't here. That's right. So, no, no. The issue is, is that if, basically, the property, that this current property, as I understand it, does not butt up to 52. There's still some acreage, there's a... That's the reason they can't get on the 52. If I remember correctly from Phase 1.
Yes, ma'am. And in Phase 1, since I was around during that time, we were trying to get two accesses directly onto Morgan Road in the Phase 1 development. We received comments from DOT, and we went back and forth with the developer on it, and basically, what I'd say, the middle ground compromise was to plan a future connection out towards 52 through this right-of-way here that would line up to Henning. But as of right now, just one access on the Morgan Road, one access on the Marlbrook Drive, and then stubouts for future development.
Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Commenting on what Ms. Hall said about that land next to 52, I don't know because I don't keep up with all the sales of land in Almaral, but I've been told that that land has been purchased by the developer. And there is a stubout right now to Henning, towards Henning Drive, which is right there at 52. So, you know, I would like to see City Council put it into motion that they use that instead of our neighborhood. These roads that are in this cluster development are 26 foot wide. Our neighborhood roads are not that big. And if you'll see in our section, on Marlbrook, there is a very tight curve, and then on Brevard, you can't see it on this screen the way it is right now, a very much bigger turn on Brevard. So I don't think our neighborhood can handle the traffic from all these houses. When you consider that most residences have two cars, there'll be impact in our neighborhood tremendously. I can see, I understand that that needs to be open for emergency vehicles while the construction's going on, but I would like for City Council to consider that only a temporary way to work in this development, not a permanent solution. Even a gate that could be opened by the fire department to get in would be acceptable. I also wanted to let, well, I think y'all did hear... I also wanted to let, well, I think y'all did hit on that there hadn't been the first house constructed out there, and they had been working, kicking up dust, they're out there burning every day of the week. It's smoke, smoke, smoke. Dust is awful. The noise from the construction equipment every day, even Labor Day. You can't even sit in your own property and enjoy what you've worked your whole life for. I know that this is progress, so to speak, but it's not really, not for us. I had plenty of notes, but I get so disturbed by all this. But I think you could see what we're concerned about. The developer said previously at one of the meetings, and I can't remember which one, that the city of Albemarle is the one that's asking them to use this Marlbrook way to get into this neighborhood because it's always been a stub out. But we lived in our neighborhood for 28 years, maybe a little longer, and that has always been considered a dead end to everybody in the neighborhood. There's two streets, Marlbrook and Brevard, that make up our nice little quiet neighborhood. It's great to walk in, and when you're getting all this traffic coming from all these houses, we're not going to be able to walk. We're not going to be able to access that road. I walked on it the other day, and I didn't get passed by the first car. Nothing passed me on my walk around the neighborhood. So I'm just trying to illustrate to y'all how concerning this is to us. We're property owners. We're taxpayers, and we're concerned about our neighborhood, and we want the city council to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other option available instead of Marlbrook? Because she's right, there's only, when you turn it off at 52, you go straight to Marlbrook, go back to the right, make the circle around. I wonder if the developer has looked at any other avenue of getting in and out of that neighborhood without having to go through it? Because I think there is going to be a tremendous amount of traffic that's not going to be totally accepted.
Since you were here before, Mr. Dry, you probably missed, you didn't hear some of the discussion, but a lot of the problem is why DOT will allow. That was one of the main problems. We could not work out a second entrance on Morgan Road because they required a footage of so far apart. Each entrance has to be so far apart, and they would not approve but one entrance on Morgan Road. Now, I do believe later on down the road, if we get the entrance going to Henning Road, to Henning Street, that would be a better access. But I don't know how you stop the Marlbrook construction entrance now because if you stop it now, you're in violation of state law because you have to have that second entrance.
So do they have it stubbed out right now for future development? And down below the dog park, could you put that back up? Where it's stubbed out, just north of the dog lot over here, come down to where the last, that right there. Because Morgan Road is, how far from there? 100 yards? 50 yards? 20 yards?
Morgan Road's on the other side. That's on the other side.
That's actually going out into the county.
138.
All right. I'm sorry.
It's almost in a field between there and 138.
So there's no stub out over on that side?
Just a stub out for additional growth.
Well, yeah.
Not egress.
We've got to look at the surroundings, talk a little bit. What the children can have, they could.
Go ahead.
My name is Rachel Carter. I'm with Chambers Engineering, here to answer any questions you have, but also since she did bring up this point, you know, like y'all just mentioned, we have, we had problems getting too interested in Morgan. You know, subdivision ordinance requires we connect to Marlbrook. The developer has, you know, been working with this property. That's a separate discussion from this, obviously, but it is required by the city ordinance to connect this stub out from Morgan to Henning. And so as of now, we have the plan for that connection to 52. And in my working with DOT in the past, I know that if 52 has a, I think it's ADT, like annual, or average daily traffic greater than 4,000 vehicles per day, you have to have a right turn lane in. There's already a center lane on 52 to come in, but we would have to put a right turn lane in here as well, which would.
Where it headed nowhere?
Headed south. We would have to put a turn lane in on 52 into a new development. And as of right now, of course, that's separate from these discussions, but that is the plan. So the traffic study showed, you know, that kind of cuts off Marlbrook from future access because it's before that. But again.
The 52 entrance would be before the.
Yeah, right. Right. So again, you know, issues with the site, and also Kevin had mentioned this in planning board meeting, that these two stub outs would also connect. So this road right here would have to connect out to Oakhurst, which comes out where my cursor is right here.
138.
Right. So there, you know.
I'm asking you to answer my question. My question is, do you have a settlement within reach of these people that doesn't grow? I'm wondering what they do. Is there an apple sale?
I believe so. South Stanley District, I believe. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's an engineer question, if Jay has more insight into that.
So part of the subdivision review process, we, I mean, we obviously get input from local DOT engineers and everything. We don't get direct input directly from Stanley County School System. Now, with the 2023, you know, build-out date, we're looking at two to three, maybe five years before this gets built out here, so perhaps those problems could be addressed. I don't know how to directly answer your question there regarding the school system because those conversations haven't been had.
Just when we look at these properties, we have to think that they, the children are, what will happen to these kids that live by them? How are we going to make, as I can understand, like I beg your pardon, but it's kind of simple because we both, we both are on the whole same thing.
Sure.
And the expectation of those kids is up there before.
Absolutely. If you'd like me to, I can reach out directly to the school superintendent to gather their input on this if you'd like me to.
I think that conversation came up during the very first presentation from the developer, and I think council, we had some discussion on that, and we said that we would. Excuse me. Excuse me.
What happened to it?
We had said at that time, at some point, we would have to address this with the school board, you know, because currently it is a South Stanley School District. Because I personally, just like you, I had some concerns about the boundaries for the school district. So at a later time, I think we as a council, along with the school board, kind of addressed that matter.
May I bring Rachel back up?
Sure.
So, thank you. So did I, am I hearing you say that there is work on getting that stub out to Henning Drive?
Yes.
And that that will be, and I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, okay?
Right.
So what's the probability of it? You're an engineer, what's the engineering probability that there is going to be that is an egress?
I mean, I hope to have it in front of y'all by the end of the year, at planning board and council, to go forward. As of right now, that's our plan. We're waiting on survey.
Okay, so.
You're working it.
Yes, sir.
I guess, let me restate this, okay? Because one of the issues on the first phase, and I know we're not in first phase, but to help Benton, as well as to just go back again, there was that, and I can't tell you how many feet, but there was almost like a buffer, if you will, that was between.
The landscape buffer.
Excuse me?
The landscape buffer.
Well, it was not real. It was almost imaginary because you all strike that, the developer, well, you all, did not own that piece, okay? Is it my understanding from what you're saying now that you do own it all the way up to 52 there?
They're in negotiations to buy it, you know, pending approval here. There would be no use for them to buy it if they couldn't build what they want to do.
Again, I did not want to put words in your mouth, but I knew that that was not even an issue the first go-around.
Right, and now it's for sale. You know, it came available for sale, and we're, you know, part of, I believe part of their negotiations is pending approval, that they could build a cluster subdivision on that property as well, but.
With an egress to 52?
To Henson, yeah, to 52, lining up with Henson. And that development would have to have two exits as well. So it would have one on 52 and one on Morgan.
Another one on Morgan?
Yes, ma'am.
Except because the distance would have been.
Yes, ma'am.
Current Morgan and new Morgan.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
But if we knew that was going to come fruition, I mean, that's a game changer.
It is a game changer.
Just to interject on that, I mean, if we, I'm cautious to, you know, propose big changes to the plat tonight solely because if we were to get rid of the Marlbrook access, one, it currently does meet subdivision ordinance right now, and we don't have any certainty of the 52 moving forward. And I'd also really like to get input from our fire marshal on that because it's fire code that regulates the secondary emergency fire apparatus access, and I don't have that code information in my power right now. So if we were to make changes with that, I would like his review.
So based on that, we're still in open public hearing, is that correct? Based on that, just what you just said, I might would offer, and I'm not going to put this on in a motion yet, but to leave the public hearing open and let's get that information, and then, once we get that information, then we can finalize this public hearing. I'm just throwing that out there because we're still in public hearing, if that's what we need to do. Just throwing that out there. What was that, Rachel? What information is up? Well, what Jay just alluded to about 52 and about the egress there and.
Basically, if any major changes were to take place to the Marlbrook access, how fire code would relate to that, if we were to make that major change tonight?
So we can hear from the fire marshal.
Ms. Birch, talk to me about legality of what we're talking about. Can we, can we hold something not knowing whether they're even going to own that property or not? Is that legal, what we're talking about?
So I think there are a lot of uncertainties, and I would not recommend holding it open for something that's not certain. So what you're saying, they don't own it, but it could potentially be a possibility. If you hold it open for feedback next year, they might not have it, and you're holding it open again. So I don't, I wouldn't recommend that. I would just recommend council reviewing the information as reviewed by planning board and recommend by that.
And I would also offer on top of that, that this connection to Marlbrook that was approved in Phase One of the development, and, you know, we are looking at Phase Two of the development, which includes all the areas in color here.
Just not to challenge anything, but Ms. Birch, if the issue that Jay has suggested is talking with the fire marshal, is that still in regards to the 52? Or is that, I mean, I'm, because that's not, I mean, that's not a given. Is that the only thing you would want to hear from the fire marshal on?
Just because he's the interpreter of his code. I was just saying a fire marshal review in case we made any decisions tonight in regards to the already-approved Phase One plat, because if we made that major change tonight, that might make things really difficult for them in planning into the future.
Okay.
And I would offer, you know, if that were the case, making changes to the Phase One approved.
And your request, the request tonight has nothing to do with another entrance. The entrances are already approved. It's just another 168 houses.
That's correct.
Counsel, further questions? Anyone else care to speak for or against? I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second. By Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Counsel, we need to consider MJSR 2104.
The motion to approve MJSR 2104.
Motion by Councilmember Whitely to approve 2104.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Can move to number nine, consider renaming Rebel Road. This is a public hearing that council left open a month before last, and I do not see anyone here that was here before on that. Anyone here who cares to speak for or against the renaming of Rebel Road?
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge to close the public hearing, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, what do you wish to do with it?
Your honor, if I may, I'd like to, in respect to renaming Rebel Road, I'd like to put a motion that we rename Rebel Road to Unity Drive.
Have a motion by Councilmember Aldridge to rename Rebel Road to Unity Drive.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion?
Has there been any input from either one?
Haven't heard no more input from either one.
Is this recommendation coming from representatives of the church? No, sir. It was just, you know, given the renaming of Rebel Road, understanding there's a church that's going to go up down there, it was, you know, thought it would be good. The church that's going down there has, is, part of their name is Community, so I just took Unity out of community. So, I mean, we've been kicking this thing down the road for three or four months. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, we've got other topics to talk about here. I know it's a sensitive topic to some people. I mean, it's a road. That's it.
There comes a point in time that you get.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes you make decisions that can be tough, but you got to make them anyway. I would like to name it, renaming it from Rebel Road to Unity Drive.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Under agenda adjustments, I've got a couple. Number 10, we're going to remove. They will not be here tonight. And number 13, I would like to move up to this point, and we have a couple people here to speak on that.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll bring up number 13, a proclamation for Constitution Week, September 17 through 23, 2021. I've got Joan signed up to speak, and Janice, are you going to speak? Come on up.
Ms. Gannon.
Hi, I'm Joan Udi, and I'm chapter regent for the local chapter of the daughters of the American Revolution, and we thank you very much for working with us. We're celebrating 234 years of the Constitution of the United States, and we're doing that in many ways, working with our local community, with the churches and library and having documents, and we're even handing out copies of the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution to all the ninth graders in Stanley County schools. So I'd like Janice Abernathy to speak a little bit about that.
Our chapter does many projects, but this is one of our favorite projects, is Constitution Week. Even though we have cut back meeting in person because of COVID, we're still doing many things. As Joan tells us, tells you, we received 1,000 copies of the Constitution from Hillstel College. We're passing them out to all the ninth graders in Stanley County. Our chapter will be meeting on the day that. Our, our chapter will be meeting on the day that Constitution Week starts, on the 17th of September. We'll be meeting at the library for our regular meeting. Then we'll be going down to the, the gazebo right down the street here and ringing the bells, bells across America. Then we'll go back to the library and have a birthday cake for our country.
And thank you very much for working with us.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
I have copies for all of you. I will give them to Shirley and she can pass them out.
Counsel, have questions, comments?
No, I just, I would like to say that, and we'll talk about this later, about the charters of freedom that are outside, right outside. I just want fellow council members to know, as well as folks that are watching this, that you all are taking part in our dedication ceremony on October 12th. And so I appreciate that.
All right, well, we appreciate you working with us. Thank you so much.
Counsel, I entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Dry to approve the proclamation Constitution Week. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving back up, the top, departmental monthly reports are in your agenda. Anyone have a question?
Just one comment on our departmental monthly reports. I know, I know we've been meeting, um, once a month and, you know, for the summer. But hopefully we can get back on track because I was just looking at the departmental monthly reports and some, some departments got June, some departments got July, nothing, nobody have all this. So it just kind of, we, we gotta get it back on track. But some, somehow we got off base.
Notice that same thing.
Your municipal calendar is in your agenda. Anyone have any questions?
One thing, not necessarily about the calendar, but you will notice on the calendar that October 12th is the charters of freedom. And Jay, I just realized that that is the same night that HRC should be meeting, okay? It's not that I'm putting you on notice, but, you know, we're expecting a lot of people here on that night, on October 12th. The music will start at 5 o'clock. The streets are going to be closed just there beforehand. The event's going to take place in front at 5:30 and will be done at 6:30-ish. So I don't know what you all might want to do that. I do know you have HRC this week or? Next week, but you all can just, if you know that ahead of time, that on the October 12th, I think that's an HRC meeting night.
I think there's a letting, so I'll, um, get with the numbers.
Okay, just, just, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, when, um, I, I, back to Rogers with Mr. Robinson?
Good for you.
And they didn't say that they were opening actually in late. I believe you remember the bill of course, for them to come back and remain. So not to be doing that.
Thank you so much.
They don't decide.
Good. Thank, thank you so much, Cindy, in, in planting and zoning. I just, I wanted us all on the same page since I realized it was all on the same day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to the consent agenda. Number 14, consider a pivot natural gas extension on South Third Street and on Sunview Drive. Ordinance 2138 to eliminate parking restrictions in the downtown. Resolution 2123 to approve preservation North Carolina, exercising their option to purchase 115, 117 West Main Street. Number 17, Department of Public Housing write-offs for fiscal year 2021. Number 18, public works recommendation for sidewalk on West Main Street. Number 19, consider road closure for Pfeiffer University Falcons Night Out. And number 20, consider road closures for the charity motorcycle ride.
Mayor, um, item number 16, I think it should be West South Street if I'm not mistaken.
You're exactly right, West South Street. That's exactly right. Thank you for correction.
And number 18, I would like to pull off for, to be by itself.
Okay.
And just asking, Brit, since Brit, since the number 16 is with preservation North Carolina, because of the depth of that, is it okay? Do you believe it's in consent or does it need to be by itself?
So council already approved the option, so we don't really have the option to not approve it. I just want to get it on public record since the option was emailed.
Right.
Um, just to have it on consent agenda, but there's no formal action.
No, no, I, okay, there's no formal action.
Mm-mm.
Okay, thank you. Then I just would like for number 18 to be pulled off.
Motion to approve consent agenda with exception of item number 18.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 18, public works recommendation for sidewalk on West Main Street. Uh, Ross back there, I see you seeing his recommendation there, recommending going from the building to the roll lock and replacing that section of sidewalk to stop the drainage where currently it drains toward the building. It would drain away from the building.
I guess, I, I just, um, I, I was going to ask, I mean, this is his recommendation. I know there's been a lot of discussion by a lot of different departments about what's going on down there. And just wondering if there's been any other agreements made with not just the sidewalk or anything else that we need, that we have not dealt with?
Council has agreed to do the parking lot, but we don't have a design on it yet.
And did, have we taken a vote on that in here?
I can't remember that far back. We talked about that when he was here early on.
Okay, I, I.
And until we get a design, I really can't tell you what it's going to be yet.
But did we, so you're saying we talked about it in here?
We've talked about it a couple of times. I don't know whether it was voted on in here or not.
I, and sometimes Cindy, if you can look that, I just would like to know because I, I want to make sure that everything that's going on with this is, that we know about everything at every point of it. I knew that we just, two meetings ago, I guess, had something added to an agenda to take care of. And I think it was maybe even this, but.
It was, it was similar.
That was the easement that led into the sidewalk, right? So I'm just, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. So, um, is there anything, Ross, come on up here if you don't mind. Sorry, but come on down. The Price is Right. And what might, we might need to talk about that, The Price is Right. So anything else you think we need to know about the sidewalk and about how it got, where it got?
I was asked to meet, um, Michael, city manager out at the project a couple of weeks ago, I believe we had met. The discussion about the easement that, that council had approved. We knew, or I knew upfront, that there was going to be some tree wells or window wells, I'm sorry, put up against the building because there was a building code with the egress situation from some lower rooms. That being said, during my meeting, um, he was just asked what our recommendation was. And our recommendation from the public works side is just for the sake of fixing back what is tore up out there, the half of the sidewalk. As you all know, one of the common themes in City of Almarl sidewalks in downtown is the, the center row brick roll lock. Uh, it's a nice decorative feature, but the, really, the, the true fact of the matter is, is that's where we have our electrical conduit that lights up our tree lights and our street lights. So with that, taking that into consideration, we didn't feel like we needed to go through and tear everything out to redo the entire sidewalk. Our goal was to just come back to the brick roll lock, to the building and replace that section of sidewalk that they've dismantled. That way we wouldn't have to worry with the underground electrical and basically do a whole total renovation. So that's why our recommendation was, was just to do the half that they tore up.
And I think that's why we put it off, so that your department could look at it.
Right.
Good, good.
That's, yeah, it'll definitely meet the need. We'll, we'll, once the window well is put in place by the contractor, we'll move in right after that. And then I think the contractor is actually going to try to help us remove the existing busted up sidewalk. Whether they do it or we do it, we'll negotiate that. But we're, we will slope the sidewalk back to the brick roll lock to keep that water away from the, from the building.
Good job.
May I have approval?
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Under unfinished business, number 21, Heritage Court curb and gutter assessment follow-up. You see the comments in there? Counsel, have any questions?
Yeah, I do. If I remember correctly, and this was, somebody tell me when it first came up. Has it been eight months, nine months since it first came up? Wait a minute, when's it, when did it first come up, Ross? Was it this year or last year?
These several.
Uh, yeah.
It was first only in November of, and then it came back in December or November.
So we first heard about it in November. And if I remember correctly, there was a comment made that said, this thing don't take a lot. We don't even need to have it engineered. And, um, Ross, will you come back up, please? Sorry. But you all have gotten into it. I mean, you all have, your department has had it now. And moving forward with it, you've gone through a lot. I know you've reported that to us.
Public facing department.
Excuse me?
Hard to make people happy.
No, I mean, he has. And, and when it first came up, there were four or five houses in there. And, I mean, I think some folks said it wasn't going to take anything and it was not going to, and now we're talking about $167,000. And I'm not, I'm not fussing at you. I'm just saying, we might have put the cart before the horse, guys. We might should have had him doing his stuff before we agreed to any of this stuff because this is out of nowhere, more money. Is there anything else you want us to know about?
I mean, I, I think all along, you know.
You've been saying it.
The comment of it being a simple project, it's a doable project. That wasn't an issue from the get-go. That, I think the issue from the get-go was just making sure that everyone was aware that it was more than just a simple curb and gutter assessment. Uh, the assessment, the way the assessment policy is written is only for cost of materials, just for the curb and gutter. And again, in my memo that I provided council back then was, there was some items for consideration on engineering, right-of-way acquisition, if that was going to take place, the stormwater infrastructure, all those cost factors went into play that doesn't take into consideration just the assessment fee. And so that was what I was trying to explain, that it's, that the project can be done, but the complexity of making sure that everybody was aware of what it might cost, it's, it wasn't, just wanted to make sure that that was put out there. And that a lot of these components of this project, we weren't going to be able to do in-house, in-house labor. We're not professional, uh, clearing and grubbing contractors to clear out woods and an acre of land to clear out a right-of-way. We're not professional, um, stormwater pipe layers. We can put some ditch pipe in, but not when you're talking about on grade and possibly eight foot deep, six foot deep, 10 foot deep. We don't have those capabilities. So those, that was the conversation I was trying to, to bring to the table.
Did any of this come into play with regard to the assessment and how it was developed?
No, the assessment, the way the policy is written, the only way that we assess the value is only on the materials of the curb and gutter itself. So that's why it's a, I don't even know, $20, $22 a linear foot. It's only for the concrete and a little bit of gravel per linear foot. City, city staff has had some conversations over the past month or so, probably maybe two months, month and a half, to where, um, we are seeing some struggles with this assessment policy and the way things have been done. Not only on this project, but other future development sites. So we've got Jay has been involved in a couple of conversations, of course, Kevin Robinson, Nikki and myself, because we see this becoming a struggle for us on staff on how to manage when someone comes in, a developer or current residents, and say, well, we just, we have the simple assessment fee. We'll just pay it and let's move on. Well, then the, the true cost of the matter, and I hate to say cost of the matter, but it is, it's, it's a whole lot more than what our fees are formulated for right now.
Well, this is, this is one for example. I mean, our assessment's $16,000 and it's going to cost us $167. So where's that other $150 going to come from? I mean, really, it's something that was not budgeted and it doesn't.
No, this is not budgeted.
No.
If, if council approves, it'll definitely take a budget amendment, you know, for, because we don't have these type of money. We, we didn't anticipate that in our annual operation.
That's exactly right.
This was, this came up before I came on. So what led to this, the way the water's flowing downhill?
Neighborhood.
That's right, that's right, right behind.
It's in the neighborhood, yeah.
I, I think the history of it is the neighborhood there, it's just a small loop. Years ago, 15, 18 years ago, the property, uh, owners did the assessment process. The majority of them did it. There was that small section on Heritage Court where they didn't have the, the, um, the numbers to do the assessment just on Heritage Court. And now through new ownership and new people coming in, the property owners petition the city.
I guess, guys, if you look at what the, I, I guess this is Mr. Ferris's, was this, who it is, was this his, and what's in the agenda packet? Is that his description of this about, this is not your memo? Your memo is included maybe in this one, I don't know if it is or not. But Mr. Ferris is saying that we would use so much money from pavement management. I, I don't want to see personally that $150,000 taken out of anything we're doing right now with pavement or anything that Ross has got to do in other, I mean, that's just, you know, this is not, he doesn't, he does not need to be chastised or his department doesn't because this is what's come up, guys. I mean, he doesn't have enough for paving. So I don't know what we do or how we do that if we approve this, okay? Where the money's going to come from, but.
I, I did have a meeting with the city manager. He did ask me where we could cut, uh, some of this, just the bottom line of the quote off the engineer's estimate on basically what we could do in-house. And it's, ultimately, the, the project still has to be done. Some material costs are there. So even, the only thing really I'm trying to mine us out is what we could do in-house and it's really just the labor. Material costs are still there and that's where I think he might have put in his memo that we could probably save $25,000 just by doing some of the work in-house. The bulk of the cost is obviously the storm drain infrastructure. Uh, the paving aspect of it, we could pave in-house, but there's still price of asphalt, which is 13, I think we estimated around 12, but it might be 13,000 in the line item.
Let me ask this, we do the storm damage dates. Is it going to interface with what we're looking at down the road with the stormwater? Because I know it's going to go down the hill and, uh, is it the Milker Creek? That is, what runs behind that?
Yeah, Milker, Milker Branch or Milker Creek. Uh, if you're asking of what kind of impact will be on Milker?
Well, I guess, well, that and also with the stormwater project that we're going to be looking at, is that going to work together down in that area where this water's going to go?
I think we're talking about two different things. Because with this just being a petition from the, the citizens or the property owners that live there, the, the stormwater management plan is going to be something totally different. They will look, our consultants will look in different areas. And I think that is going to be one of the pilot programs in that area.
That's what I'm getting with, it's going to be, look bad at that point.
But I don't think that they, I don't think the stormwater management plan looks at what streets we have curb and gutter on and what streets we don't.
I'm not talking about the curb and gutter, but going down beside Dustin's house, that pipe's going to go down there to take that extra water into Milker Creek. We all know what happens.
Ultimately, that water ends up there anyway, even now without the curb and gutter. What we're doing now, if the curb and gutter process goes in, we are directing that water to a certain point and then it discharges. That's the difference now between having curb and gutter and not having curb and gutter.
Ross, you made a comment earlier about easements, having a Pfeiffer easement. Is somebody willing to charge us for easements on this?
No, well, at, at the time I wrote the memo, I was just saying that's something we would have to take into consideration. Because at the time, we didn't know which way the private property owner was going to go, whether it would be a cost for us to get a right-of-way acquisition, to put this, either an open ditch or pipe in. Now that we've met with the property owner, she does want it piped. That's why we see this, this cost here. But at the time, there was no discussion. She doesn't, it didn't seem like she was going to charge the city anything to have this right-of-way put in place on her property, as long as it was piped.
So Ross, what you're saying is even if, even if we cut costs
So Ross, what you're saying is even if, even if we cut costs where city staff could do it, we're still talking roughly $142,000, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your due diligence. I just, it was an easy project that, I mean, straight, it was easy, but it was going to still be a costly project. I'm, I really, in making the motion to approve it, guys, I am very concerned about where the money's going to come from, and I don't want it coming out of anything else Ross is already doing. So I don't know how we can do that.
Have a motion by Councilmember Hall to approve, second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Moving on to new business, number 22, ARP First Tranche Draft Spending Plan.
Lisa's walking without any help. Okay, Lisa.
Lisa, can you stand over here? Thank you. Good evening, I'm here to present to you about the first tranche of our ARP, American Rescue Plan, and the draft spending plan that a group of us, the Strategic Planning and ARP Work Group, brainstormed and developed on August 23rd. Lisa's standing here with me because she is the staff chair of that work group, and she's going to be taking a leadership role as, as that group begins to do their work for this fiscal year. So this is our vision and mission that was adopted in June of this year, and the reason why this is on the screen is because I want councils to keep in mind that anything that we do in terms of planning for the future and resource allocation, we want to make sure that we keep our vision and mission in mind. We want to ensure that we develop people's potential in the city of Albemarle, that we connect our community, and that we also use our resources to make sure that our community remains connected through our water, air, land and opportunity. We also want to make sure that we do that in a very transparent, sound and fiscally responsible manner. So again, keeping that in mind, whenever we met as a group, the vision and mission was one of the things that Geraldine made sure to bring up in our conversations, and we use that to drive the development of this plan. So the American Rescue Plan, it was approved by Congress on March 11th of 2021, and it provided $1.9 trillion in economic stimulus to address the negative impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. Local governments received a direct allocation from the federal government, and then non-entitlement communities such as Albemarle received direct allocation from the state. So our total allocation is a little bit over $5 million. We received our first tranche over $2.5 million in July of this year, and we expect to receive our second tranche in July of next year. So the U.S. Treasury broke out the ARP into five spending categories, and that includes public health, loss revenue for public administration, public sectors, pay for premium, premium pay for essential workers to address negative economic impacts, and to invest in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. So those are the five allowable expense areas that are identified by the U.S. Treasury in their interim final guidance. So in terms of our plan and how we plan to spend that first tranche of money under those allowable expenses, you'll see right here, this is the work group that is comprised of council members, staff members, and also our facilitator Geraldine Gardner with Centralina. I think we have approximately eight items that are included in our draft spending plan for the first tranche of the ARP, and they fall under three categories, public health, negative economic impacts, and investment in water and sewer. And keep in mind that, again, connecting back to that vision and mission, that's really driving the draft plan. And also, if you think back to our community survey that was administered in December and January, one of the things that the community said primarily is, or two of the things, rather, is that we really need to invest in our downtown, and we also need to invest in high wage jobs. And you will see through this plan that it really gets at addressing those high priority needs that were identified by the community survey. So under public health, we are proposing a risk manager position. That position would be responsible for implementing all of our COVID-19 health and safety activities. City council asked that we look into requiring vaccinations, and then there are other things that other local governments are requiring in terms of weekly testing and also employees becoming vaccinated. And if we go down that path, this position helps prepare us for the heavy lift that that would incur on staff. So that, this position would be 60% dedicated to the COVID-19 health and safety policies and practices of the city. And then the other 40% would be responsible for regular occupational health and safety And then the next item, you'll see there is an asterisk by it, and there are asterisks by other items. Those are items that are in our qualified census tract. So the treasury just presumes that certain services that are in our QCT would be eligible for ARP funding. And so public housing, free Wi-Fi is what we're also recommending under public health, and it applies because part of the allowable expenses under public health is to provide internet access to households. And public housing is in our QCT, so it makes sense for us to, to address internet access for our public housing and also in a community that is disproportionately impacted by not having access to certain technology. The second allowable use is negative economic impacts. And so some of the things that we're looking to do here really impact our downtown. We're looking at downtown Wi-Fi, free Wi-Fi, dedicating money to the alleyway project that's all already underway. I do want to mention with the alleyway project, that project is going to be published for bid tomorrow, and it's already on Duncan Parnell's Bid Room website that got done today, and it'll be on our website hopefully tomorrow. So we've made a lot of progress with the alleyway project, want to let you know that that is, that bid will be published tomorrow and then a newspaper later this week. So we're looking to dedicate some ARP funding to the alleyway project. We're looking to develop a park in our QCT. Our downtown is actually in our QCT, and with all of the development that's going on in our downtown, we think that's a great opportunity to provide recreational opportunities to folks that will be living in, near and around our downtown. Some of the ideas that have been tossed out are an adult exercise park and also a dog park. So that idea is not fully fleshed out, but since parks and outdoor spaces are an allowable expense under ARP, and we also have our downtown in our QCT, we thought that that would be a perfect opportunity to address the lack of a park in our downtown. Then the downtown business grants, so that is a project that Keith has been working on, or a program, rather, that Keith has been working on to develop. We have money coming from city coffers, we have money coming from the ADDC, we have money coming from a private organization. And so this is dedicating additional funding from the ARP for our downtown business grant programs. Again, the American Rescue Plan allows for grant funding to industries that were negatively impacted by the COVID-19, so hospitality, tourism, restaurants, things of that nature. And then finally, under negative economic impact, we're looking at hiring a part-time finance specialist. This, this grant is going to require a lot of tracking and reporting, and also we have to adhere to federal, state and any local accounting requirements, and also we have to adhere to any auditing requirements. So that position would be responsible for making sure that we are in compliance and make sure that we're monitoring that and delivering the reports that we need to the U.S. Treasury. And then finally, the biggest project that is under the draft spending plan is dedicating funding to the water and sewer infrastructure at the Albemarle Business Center. And that is an item that Jacob is actually going to be speaking to city council about tonight. We're dedicating a portion of our first tranche to water and sewer infrastructure. That allowable expense that's been identified in the ARP is very clear-cut. It, that out of all of the allowable expenses was easy to identify in terms of it being eligible. And then also, it's a shovel-ready project, and federal government loves shovel-ready projects. And so we obviously tie that into the community survey and the need to have highways jobs, so it makes sense to dedicate some of our funding to the ABC water and sewer infrastructure. I do want to back up and say that Dana will be presenting tonight to council about some COVID-related incentives that we want to provide to our staff, and we also want to increase our COVID-19 leave time. And so that is also related to this risk manager position. That person would be responsible for managing COVID leave time and managing that incentive program and any future programs that we develop for our response to COVID-19. So key dates, the final guidance is not out yet. We're expecting that to be September or October of, early October of this year. And there is a project and expense report that is due on October 31st. I don't believe that we'll have our finance specialists hired by then, but if they are, they would be responsible for submitting that report. The funds must be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and they must be spent by December 31st, 2026. So with that in mind, with, with the fact that we are operating under interim rules and not final rules, the ask tonight is for council to approve the draft spending plan with the understanding that the final rules may require some modification to the plan. We feel pretty confident about the things that we've identified in our draft plan in terms of them being allowable. We've talked to Geraldine about those, but that does not mean that when we get the final, the final rules, that there will not be the need to make some adjustments. And any adjustments that we make would come back before council for approval.
Thank you. I think you've done a great job.
Just having been at that meeting, I just got some comments I'd like to make. Attaboy to those folks that were a part of this. I've got some comments, and then I've got a question, just so that everybody up here understands, because I didn't understand that day. If you'll go back, and it's on here, the, the QCT, okay? I think that we need to hear a little bit about, more about what QCT is.
So QCT is, a community is qualified as QCT whenever 50% of the population makes only 60% of the area median household income. So for Albemarle, our area median household income is like $44,000. So that means that 50% of our household, households make less than 60% of $44,000 a year. That's what that means. And so our QCT is the majority of our city. It's north of Rock Creek Park, it's east of our Optimus Park, and it's south of Moss Springs, and then west of 2427.
And if, for those of you, it was a picture of it, was actually in our.
Yeah, in the agenda packet.
In our agenda packet. And the day we met on the 23rd, whenever they looked it up and we were talking about it, it was really interesting because Geraldine, I think you and Geraldine, I don't know who found it, but somebody went straight to it, and we were just, you know, excited to know that our QCT might have some opportunities in. So number one, I wanted to bring that out from that meeting, since Chris and I were both there. The second one was, you've mentioned in five categories?
So there are four categories, but one of them is split out. The public health is split out into two categories, it's public health and negative economic.
Very good. So I just wanted to make sure, so it may be, as I understand, that there may be things we want to use this money for that don't fit in any of these five categories. Isn't that right?
Well, it has to fit in that category, but in each category, there are more details.
Right.
And Geraldine gave us a checklist to utilize to come to the items that we've come to tonight, and I can share that with council if you guys want to see that. But they do have to fall under those allowable expenses.
Right.
I do want to add, the second tranche, that process is going to be rolled up into our strategic planning, budget planning process. So that won't be a separate process, it will be aligned with our typical budget planning process.
And just so that my fellow council members and Chris may have an opportunity, or they want to, to say something or not, but when we were here that day, we would have been hearing from Mr. Ferris that he was wanting to put that all, all that money, that first tranche, $2.7 million into the ABC. And I mean, I came into this meeting saying, wait a minute, I don't want all $2.7 million going to the ABC. And I mean, I was very vocal about that. And so I will give you two attaboys, because, you know, when we saw what we, you all led us through, and I didn't see all this till it was over, all this where we were going to having or be able to use this money, because I did not want all that $2.7 to go down there. So I just give you, I just say, guys, y'all did great about coming up with, taking care of some departmental requests, because that was something I really wanted, because I know we've got a lot of requests out there within departments of capital, capital requests that we don't fund, because we don't have a capital budget. But in this, if you look at what they're offering to do, some of those would be on the capital improvement plan, would you say?
Yeah, the, the ABC is on the capital improvement plan. And there are some other things that we can look at. I was in a conversation the other day about this, and, you know, because the guidance is not final, it's hard to say what in our CIP would apply, but I think that needs to be a part of the work group process and also a part of the, the department director's their budget planning process to make sure that we pull any of those, those CIP items that have not been funded, that are allowable under the ARP, that we try to identify those.
Thank you very much.
So Nikki, to that point, would you think that that would fall into the next round of money coming in? Is that what your thoughts would be?
Right, exactly. And so, so, so right now, we're going through the budget planning process for our FY23 budget, right? And so as a part of that process, the, the spending plan for the second tranche would be rolled up into that process. So anything that we would be funding for next fiscal year would be funded from, a portion of those dollars would come from the ARP. So our regular enterprise funds, our general fund, and then there'd be ARP funding as well to fund next year's budget. Does that make sense?
Yes.
When the ARP funds are gone, is it the intention of the HR department or something to absorb the risk management?
Absolutely, because there is absolutely a need for that position. Regardless of COVID, we need that position.
And the finance specialists, I guess they would also stay on as well, correct?
That we've not talked about fully, but I'm sure Jacob would say absolutely.
And last thing, in the downtown business grant part, that's a discussion I had been having with the city manager as well, on small business startup loans. I hope that the criteria is designed in a manner where one or two people don't take the whole pot of money, you know, and it can benefit small businesses.
I agree, we need to share the wealth. And, and also, and Keith, if I'm talking out of turn, let me know, but we're moving away from loans, looking at grants. Is that correct, Keith?
Say that again, Nikki, I'm sorry?
We're, we're, we're not doing loans, we're doing grants.
Doing grants.
Doing grants, okay.
Just to add a little bit to some of the logic that was used, it was, it would have been easy to take a larger amount of this, put on the park, because it's one project, shovel-ready, it's absolutely definitely covered. Some of the others should be, but, you know, we've got to wait on the final ruling. But anything, money has been built up in water fund for this. So any funds that we freed up by putting more of this on the park would not necessarily free up those funds used for some of these other things, because they wouldn't be, you couldn't use water and sewer money.
Right.
To build a park or to, you know, do Wi-Fi, things like that. So it was a balance, so that we use this much this year, hopefully use some of the second tranche for the park. I was interested in doing something with the stormwater system. However, it's so far from being put together that, you know, there's not even a plan yet, let alone any low-hanging fruit we could find.
Absolutely.
So hopefully next year, that could be something, when we get the stormwater plan rolling, that we could use some of this for seed money, to do some low-hanging fruit projects.
Absolutely.
But like I said, some of these other things, by cutting back on this, these could be funded with ARP, but they could not be funded with water and sewer money that we would have freed up otherwise by putting, so it was kind of a balancing act. I'm kind of pleased with what we, what we got here, the, the park. And I think we were all shocked that we don't have a park in the qualified census tract.
Not a business center, but a park, a park.
Right, yeah, city park.
A city park.
So that's why I brought up, I brought up specifically tomorrow, property down here, not necessarily with any one project in mind, whether it be, you know, what kind of park it be, but at least that's kind of a placeholder with some money in it that we can look at and see what could be done down there. Since there's not necessarily a park with any activities like a Since there's not necessarily a park with any activities like a bandshell or a dog park or something like that in the downtown area. But I think they came up with a good balance here of a bunch of projects.
I would like to say, I think it's very well laid out. I think it's done very well. I do want to make the point that when we talked about the Albemarle Business Center, the funding for that, before we got any of this money, we had already said that was coming from somewhere, a general fund or whatever. So that money was already quote set aside. So I want to be sure that staff, because with the pay study and that implementation and what that's costing us, I want to be sure that staff has what they need to do their job too. And I think you're going to address that probably in the next round, but I want to be sure that our city employees have what they need too.
Right. And to Chris's point, you know, we took all of that in consideration, because it really is a balancing act. The, you know, initially, there was conversation around putting all of the money into the business center.
Right.
But the thinking was that we could use general fund reserves from the business center to fund other city projects. But then we discovered that we could not do that because there's still a need for the general fund reserves for the business center, for the roads. And so that's when we came back to the table and said, okay, we need to share the wealth with this ARP and make sure that we get some projects funded that help our downtown, that help our resource, excuse me, capacity issues for our department, but then also address one of our top community needs, which is bringing highway jobs to the city. So I think this is a good balance, and I think you will see with our second tranche, we will be even more intentional about how we allocate these funds, because we will have more information, we will have a better opportunity to plan, because this is kind of all just happened, it got enacted in March, but then the interim guidance didn't come out till a few months later, and we're still waiting on the final guidance. So once the final guidance comes out, it'll allow us more opportunity to plan for the second tranche. And then also, there was one other point that I wanted to make. With the stormwater, like Chris mentioned, there's opportunity to use some of the funds for stormwater, but there's also state funding that we're waiting to see come down the pipeline because the state has not passed its budget. It's expected to vote on, I think they're expected to vote on that by the, in October. And October is the last thing I've heard. And then also, there's the infrastructure bill at the federal level that is supposed to be voted on the end of this month. Both of those are going to give more opportunity to local governments for funding. And really, what we have to do as a city is really develop a good strategy where we're able to really maximize all of those buckets of resources, whether it be from the feds and the infrastructure bill, from the state and their budget and all of their grant funding, and then also our allocation of the ARP. It's going to take a lot of work, a lot of thought, a lot of planning, but we have more time than we did with this first tranche.
And I think to that comment, several of us, and I'm sure the two of you big time, have listened in to a lot of the ARP video conferences and those kinds of things. And the one thing that kept resonating from each one of them, at least I heard, was that, you know, the state was going to get money, the county's getting money, we get money, but that the more opportunity we have to do regional kinds of projects, the better off it's going to be. But the however that I heard, and I think you all, or Geraldine reiterated it, is that we cannot take any of this federal money and use it as our matching to pull down any state or other federal money. I mean, you know, yes, they're going to have other ARP monies out there to do things that we can get, but we can't use this as the match. So in other words, we can't double dip, right?
Absolutely, you're correct. So just asking for council approval to, on this draft plan with the understanding that any revisions will come back for another approval.
Counsel.
So moved.
Question by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend for further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
You've got a question.
One thing, the general public may not know what the American Rescue Plan, how it came about, and what's going to continue to happen as our country and our world as we know it is now going through another very end of the COVID-19. And I think they need to be aware that that's where that's coming, that's the thought process that led to this. Follow what I'm saying?
Yeah. So again, March 11th, 2021, Congress passed the American Rescue Plan Act. It was $1.9 trillion of funding to address the negative impact from an economic perspective and a health perspective that COVID-19 had on our country. It is a once in a lifetime gift that we've been given to, and it provides all sorts of assistance to individuals, businesses, households, local governments, to really try to stimulate our economy. So that's it at a very high level. The county is, I'm sure, doing a whole lot under the public health umbrella. A lot of ours are under the economic impact, and obviously, water and sewer infrastructure, which are big needs for the city. So that's sort of it at a very high level. And I think, you know, once we formalize this plan, we could probably put some information out on our website and social media to make people aware of what the city is doing and how we're connecting this all back to our vision and mission and to our community survey, which, you know, community said, we need more jobs and we need to revitalize our downtown. That's what we're trying to do.
Thank you very much. And I think, I think they have a better understanding of this money's actually coming in, that's going to be beneficial to Albemarle, and they'll have a direct reciprocal impact from this. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 23, ordinance 2139, a resolution 2126, considered designation of funds for the Albemarle Business Center.
What you have in front of you this evening are an ordinance for the operating funds to contribute the identified cash reserves, as well as appropriate some funds to borrow between the general fund and the electric fund for its share of the roadways and paving, as well as the resolution authorizing us to borrow from the electric reserves. You have also been provided a memo that I have put together in working with city manager Michael Ferris over the past several weeks that covers what I was able to identify or hopefully anticipate might be some questions. And at this time, I will entertain any questions or comments that you have.
Jacob, I think you've done a good job of getting all the information together. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
So have we approved a spec building?
No, that's something down the road that council will have to consider.
So I think the one thing that I, and I will tell you, I couldn't find it in here, and it may not be in here, okay? But I couldn't find it, where we talked about how much we've already spent and how much we've already given Chambers Engineering and all that kind of thing. And I couldn't find it in here. Somebody else could and could bring me to that page, and I would like to see it.
So this document here, it was two pages. It's landscape orientation. This is the budget as it exists today. So it's broken out into...
Okay, so hang tight a minute. You've got several attachments. Operating budget document, a project interagency loan, the tracking workbook, which one?
Tracking workbook.
Okay.
So it's broken out into three distinct phases, which I've called the design phase, which was primarily spent for Chambers Engineering to get us to this second phase, that the budget ordinance and resolution that you have in front of you tonight for the infrastructure. So that you can see, we've spent to date $526,000. If you move down to the expenditures under the design phase and the spent to date column, And at this point, that phase is considered complete. It's separated so that, you know, for accounting and reporting purposes, we can show this. I can keep it separated from the rest of the project budget, and the ordinance has absolutely completed. And then you can also see how we already do have some expenditures into the infrastructure phase. We've spent some money on the permits, easements, and we've began, you know, utilities, acquiring some of the electric supplies and materials that will be necessary, and as well as the paying Chambers Engineering for their construction management.
So we've already spent that as well, under the construction phase, under soft costs?
Yes, ma'am. So total to date, we have spent $304,000, which the vast majority of that is the state environmental impact fee that we had to pay.
And again, I don't mean to be ignorant, but I don't see, I see in the first, in the first design phase, engineering and legal, I see an expenditure of $526,550. That was on the first page.
That's the budget column, and the next column over, spent to date.
Spent to date, okay.
Yes, ma'am, $526,512. That's what was spent for the design phase to get us to this point.
So that's the design phase of $533,8 something.
Ma'am, that includes permitting as well.
And then, Jacob, if I might finish, you went down and said there has already been some more spend in the construction phase already?
Yes, ma'am.
That $231.
Yes, ma'am. Of the soft costs and then of the hard costs, the $72.6.
So it's the total we've spent, $830,000?
Yes, ma'am.
So that's what we've spent year to date, $830,000 on the Albemarle Business Center.
Not year to date, to date.
Life to date.
Life to date, not, yeah, life to date.
$830,000, okay.
And of that $830, yeah, there's engineering and easement and legal, environmental stuff. A large amount of that has been to Chambers Engineering, is that correct?
That's the $526,512 with some minor permits, or there was also a legal fee paid to, I think David Beaver.
Jacob, did we not have, didn't some of these permits run out and we had to go back and re-permit?
I can't answer that one.
Yes, sir. They, we had to go back twice and resubmit, so there was some additional cost occurred for that.
That's because we didn't move it forward during the timeframe, correct?
Well, and there was some, I think disagreement. I'll let Chambers answer that more clearly, but I think there was some disagreement between the federal core and the state and Chambers and the city, and that got worked out, and we had to resubmit one of the permits, but we didn't obtain all the permits. It's just part of doing business, I think.
This might be kind of an unfair question. I don't know if either one of you know this. What would be industry average for percentage of engineering fees and construction management fees for a project like this? Percentage of total cost?
Hmm, good question.
The permitting and the design phase, which was the first phase that was largely done before I arrived, on a park of that size, 280 acres, it really comes down to how you want to design the park and how many alliterations of that design that you go through that can drive your cost up. You really can't say, because the contour of the land, you know, permitting, you never know what the permitting is going to be. So there's a lot of cost there that you just don't realize until you're going through it. So it's a hard question to answer.
Yeah, I mean, if you were looking strictly at the engineering design, the $526 plus the park, the engineering, construction management park, roughly, I mean, the impact fees is what they are. You know, that's not somebody's fee.
The impact fees were, what, $260,000, I believe?
Yeah, $260,000. So it looks to me like that's around roughly 10%. And everything I saw looked like it was anywhere from 5% to 15% or maybe more. So it seems like, seems like those fees are kind of in line with the percentage you'd see, that you would expect to see on a project like that. Is that fair?
I think the fair answer would be, my experience has been that as you design and permit a park, it comes down to what decisions that you make and how many alliterations of that plan that you have the engineer do. All the work that Chambers did was requested by the city, so the work he did was what we asked him to do. A lot of that was done before I got here, but it's all certainly work that we did request that he do and was done properly.
I guess the part that concerns me is in the design phase, the original budget was $150,000, and to date, we done spent $526,000 just on the design phase. That's concerning.
If I may on that, I can't speak to what the prior director, you know, was doing with putting together the budget itself, but it's, the original budget column is, I wouldn't consider that a true reflection of where this project was or is going. And that's why what you have today is the revised budget column that shows, you know, how we can see, you know, in this second phase, you know, we've got just shy of $270,000.
You know, I know you say it's not the true, I guess, estimate or budget, but that's what's presented to us, and that's what we got to go by, you know?
And to that point, if it was, if it was just a couple hundred, if it was just a couple thousand dollars, it'd be different, but you're talking about a huge, huge difference there.
But you got to remember, Colleen had to set up a budget to meet the accounting rules to keep us from being in violation. She didn't have a number at that time to go with. She chose a number just out of her head to put something on paper to get going, because you have to have an account set up before you spend money on it. So she was just putting a number there to get the account set up. And now council is responsible now for going back and putting the money in it, a more accurate number.
And I would add too, that I believe, Mr. Mayor, before I got here, the Leonard Avenue extension, we did a plan for it as well.
We did.
Whether we were going to add that to the project or not. So that drove some of the cost up as well. So there were, you know, different requests as you went along in that process that did drive those costs up. But you do, I did send the plan and the budget to other engineers to make sure when I presented to you all in December, that I was presenting a solid budget and a solid plan for the park with my recommendations off my experience. I think what you have now going into the construction phase is a solid park and a solid plan that we can market, create good, high-paying jobs for the people in Albemarle. And my recommendation would be to approve this, let's move forward. Because once earth starts moving out there, most consultants and companies that are looking for projects, project sites, they don't believe you have a park that you're actually putting infrastructure in and moving earth. So we can start marketing that park immediately, and that's the plan. So I'm excited about that. In answer to the previous question, I would like, Mr. Mayor, to point out on the spec building, I'm putting together hard cost and budget numbers on that, and we'll come back to you all at a later date to discuss what options are available to us on public-private partnerships or other unique ways to finance that building. Candace Louden shared with me that over 30 projects have been missed, opportunities in the county over the last 90 days, seeking 100,000 square foot buildings or larger. So there's more projects right now in the pipeline than ever, and that comes from consultants and other people in the industry. So I would recommend we move forward as hastily as possible to build the park and then come back to you all with some hard numbers and a plan to do the spec building.
Did we have an option or an opportunity on this mattress manufacturing company that's coming into Montgomery County with 100 jobs? And they got 100,000 square foot buildings, did they not? How did Troy get something like that? This sort of...
How did you do that?
Troy. I mean, they got this mattress group up from up north, they wanted to expand into southeast.
70% of all projects start their search online, which is why we're going to have a robust website to market this park. Second, of those 70% of projects, they are looking for existing buildings. The old buildings with low ceiling heights, the old textile mills, you're not going to see anybody take those. So you got to have a modern building with high ceilings, in a modern park with good infrastructure. infrastructure. The benefit that we have over other communities is the fact that we'll have a Class A park. I'm hoping that we can put together a plan to, for you all to support a spec building, because with that many projects out there looking for a building, if you don't have a building, they're going to pass over you and we'll just have to market the park, which we will certainly do. We'll build projects for the park, because you stand a much better chance if you have that building. And you have to look at this as an investment, just as you invested in the electric company or the water and sewer plants. This is going to generate revenue long-term for the city. The potential investment in this park would be over $1 billion worth of industrial investment that's taxable. And that could pay for a lot of, a lot of bills, a lot of things that each of the departments need and the citizens need. Plus you have 25% of the population living below the poverty line. We need to get people in good, high-paying jobs and that one thing missing in this community are the high-tech, high-wage manufacturing jobs. So this will answer that. In the long run, pay a lot of, return on investment's going to be huge.
I think Mr. Townsend had something else he wanted to add.
Just one other thing.
Thank you.
And our new finance director, I'm sure he can help us out with this going forward, because I think we confuse ourselves when we approve bits and pieces here and there, sometimes on the agenda, sometimes in the back, you know, we do it all over the place. But going forward, I hope that we can, when we got large items of this nature regarding projects like this, that we can put in the agenda packet, the original budget, the amount spent to date, so that we'll be able to track it a little better and not get caught off guard at the end.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, and that, and that goes right along back into why, at this point, I've wanted to separate it into the three distinct phases, the design phase that's complete, the infrastructure phase that we're moving into. And I've specifically separated the, you know, revenues or cash contributions or the loans for those phases, so I can keep those tied together, so that I can provide accurate updates whenever needed to show how we're running, are we going over, you know, potentially in, you know, fees or how are we running towards the construction contract that was awarded? Absolutely.
And there's safeguards in this, in this next phase. For instance, any invoice that's submitted by Chambers or anyone in this project moving forward has to have complete description of what that fee is for and invoice for, so we can track that properly. You know, I've been very clear that we're not going to entertain change orders unless there's a very solid reason to do it. We have budgets for a reason, we have guidelines. And I could promise you that this is my number one goal, is to get this park going, hopefully get the spec building going, let's put people to work, let's get that best on the ground and, and see what the revenue is going to be and payroll is going to be, it will help the town.
Mr. Townsend, I did, I, I want to add something to that. I think that that was a point that you made that should have been made, so thank you very much for that. Because I think over and over and over, particularly with this, we've asked, how much have we spent, what's our budget? And it was, everybody was stepping over everybody's toes, because nobody could give us an answer, okay? And I have been very, very frustrated about that, as well as I know other council members have that well, okay? Even at that meeting that we had on the 23rd, I asked that day, and Mr. Whitely, you may remember, how much money have we spent on ABC so far, where's the budget? And I think you even looked at Mr. Ferris and Mr., I mean, you know, it was just the, it's very, very chaotic, because nobody could tell us. So whoever continued to push that this be driven this way, I appreciate it, because at least it's in black and white, and I have not seen it in its totality as, as much and as in-depth as I have right now. So, and I too am very upset that we were over budget about 75%, or 350% over budget on that one item, so.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to make a comment. Um, the, the question about the budget in the ARP meeting, there's a project budget for the ABC, and I think I misinterpreted the question that day as to whether there's money in this year's operating budget for the ABC. There's a separate budget, but you all have to approve those funds being expended, which is what we're asking you to do tonight. So the next step is, let's build the park, and then I'll come back to you with a plan to, for you to consider a spec building and how, what options are available to you to make that decision.
Thank you. Council, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance 2139.
Motion to approve ordinance 2139.
Motion by Councilmember Whitely.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion on resolution 2126.
Motion to approve resolution 2126.
Motion by Councilmember Whitely, approve resolution 2126.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 24, resolution 2124, consider setting a public hearing for a voluntary annexation of 136.063 acres off of Highway 52 South.
Six.
This is one staff recommending.
Council, staff is recommending that we set the public hearing for Monday, October the 18th, but there is some consideration that council will need to give at that time, and in particular, the utilities. That's one thing that staff needs to clarify with the developer, that we have utilities, but they do not go to this piece of property. And my thought is, now, this is just me, the developer has to bring them to the property. The council can choose to bring it to the, to the property themselves.
Well, it sounded to me like the staff's recommendation, they wanted us basically to just wait so that they could get more information, get with other departments, see what's going to be needed, that kind of thing. Is that what they're asking?
You know, guys.
Jay, come on up.
Before, as he's coming up, I will tell you that when we annex, one of the things we gotta do is, is to make sure we've got those services. And I'm, I'm really scared about, you know, putting the heart before the horse on this one.
Sure. So the same could be said, when I'm about to say, for this item and the next item as well, that in general, staff is going to, beginning with different departments, utilities being one of them, and also police and fire to gather their input on annexing in these areas that are, you know, getting further and further out from the city limits. Staff definitely has some concerns about, you know, utility access, what the developer's expectations are of us, what our expectations are of them. And we're not opposed to having this public hearing scheduled for the 18th. That's going to grant us enough time and opportunity to discuss that with other departments and bring something to, to y'all, so that y'all can make an informed decision.
So you think that's enough time?
Yes, ma'am.
For most of these?
Yes, ma'am.
Move, set, was, consider setting a public hearing for voluntary annexation of 1.36063 acres off of Highway 52 South, set the public hearing for Monday, October 18th.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Item number 25, resolution 2125, consider a setting a public hearing for voluntary annexation of 85.53 acres off of City Lake Drive. This will be exactly the same type situation.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? Again, this will be Monday, August 18th, October 18th. All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number 26, resolution 2127, to provide incentives for employees vaccinated against COVID-19 and to provide additionally for employees adversely impacted by COVID-19.
Mayor, we have a few comments.
Sure.
So the resolution, Mayor and Council, that you have before you this evening is to consider additional benefits to our employees who continue to be dealing with the effects of COVID-19 daily. I'm getting calls from the field about how their children are being impacted, how some of them find themselves in the hospital in dire circumstances. So the resolution provides for two things. Number one, we, we have no idea who on our staff is currently vaccinated. Council has asked for a recommendation in that regard. Many municipalities across the state are adopting incentives, so our incentive would be to provide two days of paid vacation to any employee who provides us information about their vaccination status by the end of October. So that's the incentive we would like to put in place at this time. We would also like to provide additional time for those employees who are impacted by COVID-19. To date, we have had 62% of our staff who have taken advantage of the benefit that you previously approved for two weeks of paid time away from work. We've had 15% of our employees have exhausted all of that time and have been asked to use their sick time to cover additional time away from work. So we're asking for you to approve an additional one week. And that comes largely because, as you're aware, with the fire department, we were actually mandated by the public health department to, to close that department for, for a total of 48 hours and, and make those folks go home. We certainly don't want to see that spread in other areas, and so we want to encourage our staff to be vaccinated and also to provide the additional safeguard, should they still be dealing with the effects of COVID-19.
Council questions?
Motion to approve resolution 2127.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, approve resolution 2127.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion?
Just, just a question, just for clarification. So if we add a week, and a person, for instance, has already had to take, use their two weeks, and they've had to take two weeks of, of their own sick?
Mm-hmm.
I know it's going to be a nightmare.
It would be a nightmare.
So you don't go back and, and offset that, you're just giving it, moving to the future?
Going forward.
Okay, so that's one nightmare passed over. And the other, the two days off, is that, I know this is crazy, is that per shot or is that, I mean?
Fully vaccinated.
Fully vaccinated.
Fully vaccinated.
Show us the card with the fully vaccinated.
Fully vaccinated, okay.
And that's one reason we pushed the date out. Nikki and I discussed that, to give people enough time.
And is that for anybody, for those folks who may have gotten it back and may have?
Yes, ma'am.
And show you they're fully vaccinated.
Already fully vaccinated or choose to get vaccinated now.
And, and just to make you guys aware too, there are other communities that are doing things like providing monetary incentives, and the reason why we haven't gone there yet is because there's a question out there about whether or not ARP funding can be used for incentive retroactively. So for those people who already got vaccinated, it can be used to incentivize people to get fully vaccinated, but retroactively, we don't know that yet. And so until we get the final rule, we want, don't want to put, put that forth as an incentive.
And we also didn't want to deal with the tax consequences.
How many of our employees have been fully vaccinated?
We, we have no information on how many employees have been fully vaccinated. This will be our first request for that information. And, and one reason we really need that information is because the quarantine guidance is different for those that have been vaccinated versus, versus those that have not.
Can you get that legal?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Coming around table, Mr. Townsend.
Uh, I missed my opportunity when the representatives from Piedmont Natural Gas was here, but they actually have placed, I guess, stakes in the right of way all through the South Alamo community, and they've been there probably three or four months.
A long time.
And it's been preventing, I guess, when the public works come through and cut the side of the roads and stuff, we got grass grew up all over, you know, way it exceeds our ordinance on, on grass. You know, so I put it like that, so.
You're right, they're way ahead on marking than they are catching up with putting them in.
I mean, them states been there at least three or four months and they, no activity, so. That's it.
Ms. Hughes?
No comments.
Oh, one other thing.
Okay.
I didn't see anything in there about the fire department ceremony this Thursday.
I asked Mr. Chief Bruton, he said it is still on.
Okay, Thursday.
That's six o'clock at North.
North Alamo.
Okay.
Mr. Aldridge?
Oh, just, just real quick, for those of you who may not know, this coming Thursday, which is the night from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM at Vacintosh, they are working in conjunction with Atrium Stanley, and they're going to be offering free COVID-19 vaccines. It's going to be the Pfizer vaccines. Anybody that goes down on this day and this, between these times also can qualify, or will qualify for a $500 giveaway. So if you, if you've got folks that are kind of teetering on the fence between should I get it or should not, there's a chance they could win 500 bucks if they go down on Thursday. So I want to thank the folks at Vacintosh and Peter Schuto for all his hard work on, on trying to get the community vaccinated and trying to keep everybody safe, so.
Ms. Louter?
Nothing.
Ms. Hall?
Nothing.
Ms. Whitely?
All over the chair. I don't know.
Oh, I'm like, I'll do that.
All right, Council, we.
I will do one thing then. Yes, well, Food Truck Friday is this week on Friday night, but it is at Market Station in conjunction with the Elvis Bike Ride, the Tour de Elvis, that's right, Tour de Elvis, excuse me. But it is Friday night, and there will, there will be a band.
Oh, no.
Um, I do want to bring up something about October 12th, just so folks will continue to keep that in mind. That is our Charters of Freedom. There've been a lot of people and a lot of time gone into working on this dedication ceremony. And something that I need to ask is, and I don't know who I need to ask, but I need you all to know that we need to do this. The entrance from Second Street to drive through, to drive through to pay, okay, that little entrance right there, based on all the folks that we're going to have here that day, we've got 30 minutes of music that will start at 5:00 that the concert band is going to be doing, that, that's where the band needs to be seated. So I know we're providing chairs, Ronnie, from somewhere, but I'm wondering how crazy that will be, is if we.
That's going to be tough to do at 5:00. Because we have a lot of people come through between 4:00 and 5:00.
Come through right from 4:00 to 5:00, do you think?
Yeah.
You know, it's just.
We have to look at that.
Well, and we've got somebody that's actually doing the staging of things, one of, at our last meeting last week. We've got, that is a biggie because of the number of band members that we've got there. So.
Nikki, will you get together with collections and see if, how much of an impact you think it would be if we shut that down at 4:30 on that day?
October 12th?
Yes, ma'am. And, and it may be, Ronnie, I mean, we could probably get chairs up.
In five minutes.
Yeah, I mean, it might even be, not even 4:30, but yeah, I just, I thought about that last week at our meeting, and I'm thinking we've got to be able to do that, because the music will start at 5:00, so.
We'll put that as a subject request. You may have to be street closed that day, and then I'll get the paperwork.
Okay, and the street closure has already, we've already, that's already been approved. The street closure itself, I think, has.
It improves that we have got the permitted process.
Oh, okay, got you.
The factory will work.
Okay.
We were just talking about, because if the street's closed, then the access can be closed. But I can't remember what time the request was for the street.
Ah, very good, though. That's right, if the street is closed.
5:00.
Is it just 5:00?
So we might have to adjust that too. We were left at 5:00 because the bank would be open.
We, yeah, we need to.
We'll take a look at it and call back.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Dry, did you have anything?
Sorry.
Okay, Council, we do not have anything for personnel, so I'll entertain a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Stat Street 143, 318, 11A1, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential.
And, and we do, we did have personnel on there, right?
Well, we do not have anything unless somebody knows something I don't.
Let's leave it on there. Let's leave it too, as well.
Okay, for confidential and personnel. Entertain a motion. Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Second regular session. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Coming out of closed session, we have nothing to report. I'll entertain a motion that we recess until 6:00 tomorrow night. Motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
We have a vote.